6:41, I'll open the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School Committee, September 23rd. Renee, clear the roll.
Steve Owen.
Here.
Dean Thawke.
Here.
Jerry Barron.
Here.
Dan Blum.
Here.
Robert Clark.
Yes.
Will Sinkowitz.
Here.
Steve Sylvia.
Here.
All right, outside of Lakeville, anybody else recording the meeting? All right, I'll ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
We flag the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, and to God, and to the good deed and justice for all.
For those members on the right, I'll make a slight adjustment for our next minute so it's not behind the pole. Item number three on the agenda, public participation, anybody here for public Seeing none, move on to item number four, acceptance of minutes for September 9th in the executive session.
I'll move second.
Do I have a motion to have a second? Thank you, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion is unanimous. Any presentations to the school committee?
We do not, they're not already on the agenda today.
Item six, old business, 6A, FY20 budget certification.
Okay, so there are no additional updates to the actual numbers that were presented for FY20 at this time. The only thing I do want to note is a few things, the auditors are working on assisting us with the E&amp;D certification process, which should be completed no later than October 31st. Also, our end of the year report filing required by the Commonwealth deadline has been extended from October 1st to October 16th. Due to the COVID challenges this year, there are many school departments and school districts in the Commonwealth that expressed challenges on completing a filing this year, some do not even have a budget in place for FY20 while others may have just been successful passing their budgets. One other thing to note, for the $581,000 in COVID-related expenditures spent in FY20, just today, I have compiled a billing to the town of Lakeville under the Plymouth County CARES Act to attempt to recoup of $285,000 from fiscal '20. Just as a side note, the Plymouth CARES Act funds includes both the $225 per people allocation of $365,175, as well as any additional funding that the town of Lakeville is able and willing to provide to us. That's my update for FY20.
Any questions on FY20? All right, 6B, FY21 budget update.
You'll see in your packet that revenue collected of approximately $3.1 million year-to-date approximated those revenues when compared to the same timeframe last year. Expenditures year-to-date total $5.5 million, which also approximate those of the prior year. I was planning on providing a COVID-projected expenditure update as part of Agenda Item 8A, but I would just like to note, the majority of the projected COVID expenditures have not yet been invoiced and as a result are not yet reflected in the actual column year-to-date. The encumbrances include any commitments of expenditures as well as committed salaries. There is currently $12.5 million not yet committed available to spend. One additional item to note, that I will be adding to the COVID expenditure spreadsheet for FY21, is that we are taking a close look and watching the custodial and maintenance overtime expenditures. For FY21, there was $45,000 budgeted, and year-to-date, although we have just started the school year, we have already spent $19,000. Overtime has been authorized as it relates to cleaning costs considering the safety of our students, teachers, and administrators. It is possible that we could end the year with spend ranging from $100,000 to $200,000, and we could be looking at a shortage of $45,000 to $150,000. As I stated, we'll be carefully looking at those costs.
Related to FY21, do we, obviously the budget is a concern, you know, are we, what are we projecting being over budget?
So, I can go over those details if you'd like, on Item 8A, I was planning on, those are really the unbudgeted COVID items, if you will, and we can talk about what those projected deficits might be.
Mr. Owen, if I may just add, and Kara, I think she's captured it, I know she's going to go into more detail there, clearly this was a different summer, we benefited from the last few years, as many of you know that were on the board, where we were able to not have our buildings ready with the use of overtime, and historically there've been an issue, so this year obviously brought with it so many more challenges in relation to getting the schools ready, Kara has kind of highlighted that. I would say that as we have kick-started our school year, last couple of weekends, for example, we have not had to take advantage of that, so I'd like to think that those costs were literally startup costs, we still may have some overtime, but I don't think you should anticipate seeing the same type of magnitude as we have our staff working, but obviously we'll have to monitor that, as Kara said, month by month.
Any questions on FY21? 6C, reopening schools.
Mr. Owen, thank you, so I am excited, thrilled to say overall, we've had a very positive start to the reopening of our schools. I just jotted down a few items in no particular order of priority, but kind of some highlights as it relates, I did provide for you the enrollment piece, and I'll speak to that first, typically the first week of school, you ask for this, you're taking a look at the class size, obviously this brought a unique trend this year, it is consistent with what we are seeing across the state, and we continue to update that, I've tried to reflect on the bottom there, just some unique things that have taken place this year, for example, school choice, that's about the anticipated number, we expected, actually we're right on target there, we didn't continue to increase our school choice numbers because we had some safety and health issues, if you recall, right, we were hard pressed to keep cohorts in place and take students from out of your town or district, so those numbers reflect existing. Homeschooling, you could see, pretty significant number, and Dr. Kobinski probably correct me, when this document was shared with you last week, it's probably been adjusted upward one or two families since that time. So typically we see, you know, 50 families, 40 to 50 children, not necessarily families a year, in my six-year tenure, this is a pretty significant increase, but it's also a trend across the board in relation to people's anxiety relative to returning to school. I'd like to see, I'd like to think that in a lot of the homeschooling letters that I've seen that go to Dr. Kobinski, many of the references are to establishing the early portion of the year with hopefully a safe return to school, so hopefully we'll see that. Keep in mind, homeschool students though, and it's a real significant issue, withdraw from your district and are not counted towards your Chapter 70 funding, so that's why you're hearing a lot about kind of a stay put placeholder in relation to Chapter 70, and so that's going to be a significant issue, not just at Freetown-Lakeville, but across. I'd be happy to speak to it, you could see the numbers across, there's no necessarily common thread, 13 viewers, I used the October 1, typically we go month to month, but I thought it was more important to use the accurate October 1 number to reflect what it looks like, and we'll have a new October 1 number, and you could see ironically, our high school class went up a little bit higher, our freshman class came in, it's the one school where we saw an increase, so we saw just under 100 students in relation, and then our TECA students, we have 232 initially signed up and enrolled for the TECA program broken down by high school, middle school, and the three elementary schools. We may see some, we may see some adjustments in the TECA number as well as we look to priority families, we're looking at, are running some issues as it relates to the full remote, and we're prepared to make those transitions potentially prior to that timeframe for those individuals, it's a priority right now for Dr. Kobinski's office and my office, but I wanted to kickstart kind of the positive piece to it in relation to one, numbers, but also just talk about a few other things, and I'll come back to any of these items for the board, I'll try to capture them pretty quick. Staffing, current staffing, we have postings for a paraprofessional position, it's a replacement, it's not a new position, if you look to our school spring website, a person moved into another position, so we're looking for a paraprofessional at the intermediate, intermediate school, we're looking for substitute nurses to obviously support our existing five nurses, one per school, and again, there's no long-term illness piece there, it's just, and we have a leave, so those are the only staffing, current posting positions that we need to fill. I'm excited to say that we are looking to kickstart our campus programs in October, we are looking at a potential intramural swimming program, we're looking at a running club for grades 8 to 12, we're looking at tennis intramurals, and we are also looking for strength and conditioning, and we'd be starting that program approximately running October 5th through November 19th, following our cohort model. In other words, these programs would be offered simply to our childrens that are in person, and it would be offered to both cohorts as well, so also all students involved in the district would have an opportunity, and that's our campus program, so we've had to make some adjustments, we're not offering flag football, for example, which is pretty popular at this point, but we had to look at some of the restrictions in relation to activities, we continue to explore for athletics, what that program's going to look like, I know the assumption is that we're going to go right to that wedge season, that's not necessarily what the South Coast is looking at, they're looking at to formulate four seasons, starting with the winter season and spread it out right through June, and I think, I think all 10 communities, if we're able to pull this off, and the students will see a great benefit to that, we're going to try to maximize what the best conditions are, because I know there was some concerns in relation to field conditions and so forth in February, March. The state informed the district, first day of school, you'd be interested to see this, those of you that are big about assessment, so we received notice the first day of school that the middle school has been selected to participate in the NEEP testing in March.
What'd be?
First day, Commissioner O'Reilly sent the letter to me indicating that the middle school has been chosen to do NEEP testing, so we thought the timing of it was ironic, it was our first day, we were kicking it off, and they were letting us know that we'll have some additional assessment testing, which is federal testing, that should take place in the spring. I referenced our TECA families, we do have a small percentage of families, and I have to recognize, keep in mind, 232 students, the vast majority of families, we have some parents sitting, well, at the table today that can maybe speak to that when Pat speaks, that have had very successful starts in a full remote piece, but we do have some, a small percentage that we're working closely with Liz Curlin for special education services, making sure IEPs and modifications are made, and we're prioritizing those students and potentially looking at those families' ability to return to a hybrid model prior to their commitment of January 25th based on some of the difficulties they're having, and so that transition back to our, to our in-person model may be an option for some families that initially made that full remote commitment. We think it's going to be a small percentage based on the interaction that we've had in the last week, but we'll provide a transition. Desi has basically said that they feel that anywhere from three to four weeks is a reasonable transition when you look at your cohorts and safety, I'm not so sure it's going to require us to wait that long, and we hope to maybe after the, after the first week of cohort, just remember we're in cohort A this week, cohort B next week, we'd be able to make some adjustments and maybe address those needs. They may remain with the full remote, but we'll be able to offer some, a small percentage of those families the option, potentially, and I think that's, I think that's something we need to do in relation to being flexible there. Additional supports at all levels, building, Kara mentioned, building-based subs, increased lunch and recess monitors, some additional supervision both in the morning and afternoon relative to the staggered safe start, and we've had a lot of success with our transportation, right, in the sense, and you guys typically would know it because you'd be getting the calls if we didn't have that piece, and certainly kudos to the, to first student and their work with our administrators to make sure we have that in place. We're trying to provide some more tech support for families, students, and staff, we continue to explore the opportunities that we can create in the coming months to see more of our children come back in person. One of the things, one of the strong recommendations for the state from Desi is that you look at educators' families and try to prioritize those, those children to return to full, to maximize, but just to give you an idea how complex that can be, in our district, and it's a great thing for Freetown-Lakeville, we did an employee children inventory this week, each principal looked at how many, and I won't put you on the spot and ask you, but the answer is, we had 115 students who have employees, then primarily educators, teachers here, that go to school here and are one of the two cohorts for the most part. Couple of exceptions that go to both cohorts that are, that fit into a different category and/or remote, and so we looked at, from a safety perspective, number perspective, transportation perspective, whether we could potentially phase those students and allow that. In addition, we also have to take a look at and see if we have any struggling students, hiding students potentially, that didn't classify in the first category that we might be able to incorporate into full in-person as hopefully things progress, and then ultimately we're looking at that. So I just wanted to kind of give you that flavor of that, the state has asked specifically, their recommendation was where possible to accommodate those, those parents of educators to allow their children to attain because of the childcare piece, and again, I'm not, I'm not recognizing the fact that all families are faced with that situation, hybrid, but specifically the educators, and we've had a couple of requests from educators that live in town that work in other school districts, so I've had to reach back to them, and I have to say, it's a larger number than you would think, what's one student, what's one family here, but we need to be consistent about that. It appears to me, we have more flexibility, believe it or not, at the elementary level right now, relative to our numbers, than we do at the middle school, high school, but I'll keep you updated from a committee perspective. Desi is approving remote learning for snow days for this year, one year, piece hasn't been finalized, but the recommendation is that in fact you can use a full remote learning model in place of a school day, and I would say, if you're a middle school or high school parent, or even for that matter, some elementary parents are getting more and more information, I think we've seen a lot of success with our, with our remote model so far this year as we, as we talked about, the improvements that we've made in relation to synchronized and asynchronous learning. The COVID reporting, I shared with you the commissioner's update, so for the community just to be aware, there is a reporting mechanism, it's detailed, it's outlined, it's full transparency, right, if you have a student and or staff case, you must report it to the state, and you must then communicate it out to the district, obviously taking into account, you know, personal confidential information, so it's a systematic approach, I've shared some of the documents with you, there are hotline phone numbers, they're identified there, and certainly we've seen in some local communities where they've already had that experience, and I think it's, you know, unfortunately, probably the sign of the times that we at some point will do so. I spoke to the nurse leader at the high school here today, Paula Mullen, just asked her, could you kind of give us an update, she knew we had school committee tonight, and just to give you a little perspective, five schools, we, you know, 1,600 students, we had 10 students out of five schools, so on average, two over the course of, what, six or seven school days, that were sent home with some symptoms for testing. Again, not tested positive, but were asked to go home based on the symptoms, and again, I think that's, I think that's a sign of, number one, and I can tell you what the nurses shared, shared with me, or at least through Paula's conversation with me, I think it reflects families doing their due diligence in relation to sending kids that, and we've been really trying to promote that balance between making a judgment upon being, having it safe to come to school or not. And I'd be, so that kind of captures my reopening, I apologize a little bit longer, but obviously we didn't, I didn't bring the principals in front of us today, and certainly as we get some more detail on the numbers, and as we get a little bit further along, we can, we can provide some presentations, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you didn't think it was captured there, but I tried to be as inclusive as possible, Mr. Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Owen, any questions in the committee? It's Barron.
At our last meeting, we had some families that were concerned about TECA, so you said a small number are still struggling a little bit with?
Yeah, we're still, so we still, we're still running into some complications, so there's a, there's a group, and Pat speaks to this if you'd like, I'll kickstart it. So we had some, some technical issues in relation to, right, getting the remote piece and the compatibility of the Chromebooks, and we've kind of worked through that, so there's a, there's kind of a bucket that is understandable, that you're going to have now that you're in full remote, making sure you have your usernames and passwords and all those things. We got them registered properly, we're working with TECA. One of the things I think that we've certainly learned from this experience is, TECA is reputable, but in place for some time, but they're not your staff directly, so the control is lost a little bit in relation that you can't, you have some go-to and contact people. What we are finding, and Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, I'd say 10 to 15 families are still navigating through, making sure their accommodations are in place, we uploaded all the IEPs, for example, so the district handled that, they have all that information, but when you have classes like some of them have, which historically have been five or six students, but now maybe 36 students, you can imagine that maybe they're not meeting those needs. It was, it was a concern from the get-go, from my perspective, and I don't want to speak for, for Ms. Curlin or Dr. Kobinski, my strong recommendation in most instances were, is if you could accommodate the health aspect of it, and I understand families, sending them to our hybrid model where they get them in person and have direct services here was the best approach, but we recognized that, that in some instances it wasn't possible, but we're going to be going back to those families, Sherri, and I just, I wanted to hit it straight on because I think there was some, I don't want to gloss over the fact that the TECA experience for all families has been completely successful. I do know we have a couple of parents that if they want to jump in and could speak to it here, we have a school committee member and a director who could speak, putting a parent hat on in relation to positive piece, and I don't want to put words in their mouth, but it runs the gamut, we do feel we can kind of work that out, Sherri, and I think at the end of the day, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, we will, for those families that feel that they have exhausted all avenues of success and want to return, we're going to welcome them back and we'll get them transitioned in, that's the plan. So, I didn't mean to put those, I alluded to them, I didn't call them by name, I don't know if you wanted to comment Jen, or in relation to your experience.
We've had, we've had great success, besides the little technical glitches in the, in the beginning, which we expected, we've really had no problems, everybody that's involved with TECA so far has answered any questions that we have, we have access to all of our teachers, we actually have great access because we can email them literally anytime, day or night, and they do respond within 24 hours. My biggest issue was the IEP, which now that that's been uploaded, I'm hoping that this week will change a little bit, but overall, I mean, our experience, I have a senior and I also have an eighth grader, both of them obviously can work semi-independently, they do need help, but overall, we've really had a great experience with it so far. We do look forward to coming back to school, but for now, it's working for us.
So just to give you that, they segue, high school level, right, and middle school, and then, yeah, elementary.
I can speak to elementary school level, my, my twin boys are in first grade, and if you can imagine a classroom with, you know, two boys sitting side by side, it's actually going quite well. We feel that the support at TECA has been great, similar to what Jen just commented, we're feeling that the educational materials are useful, I found even the second day that they were in the program, they were doing math that they weren't doing a month ago or a few weeks ago, so so far it's great, but we are also looking forward to returning to in-person school.
And if I could just clarify for the, for the IEP piece, so we uploaded that, so the district handled that portion, these are our students, they remain our students, but it's the ability for those staff members that are TECA staff members to make sure those accommodations are being met, and you lose a little bit of grasp there in relation to the oversight of the ownership, we're finding, and so I do know that we have a conference call really facilitated by, by Ms. Curlin, and pushing them to put something together, I want to say it's tomorrow or the next day where we're going to hopefully kind of get that taken care of in relation to moving forward.
One last question, I neglected to write down, Dr. Kobinski, the coordinators, I remember Mr. Ward was the elementary coordinator, can you tell me who the other two were?
Nicole Graff, who's the head of guidance at the high school, she's the coordinator for the high school, and Jack Higgins and Sue Toulon, who's the guidance person, they're the middle school coordinators.
Could you spell Nicole's last name for me, please?
Toulon?
T-O-O-L-I-N. Thank you very much.
Did you say Toulon?
Were you looking for Nicole?
Oh, Graff.
Oh, Graff.
Graff, yeah.
Suzanne Toulon.
That was high school.
Nicole Graff, she's high school.
I will, I'm happy to hear that we are, they are still our students, so whatever support that we can give, all of them, I know a majority of successes, but we had some pain points along the way, I'm happy that some of the technology pieces are being looked at, so I'd welcome a continued update to that way, we welcome all of them back, but they still are students, so we need to support them in any way possible, so I'm happy that we're continuing.
Yeah, for a small percentage that, if they're tuned in today and listening, it's still, it's been frustrating for that small percentage, and we, and we have prioritized those individuals, and we're, we're trying to work with them to make this happen.
Agreed.
It is a learning curve.
Yeah, it is.
The first few days, I was a total mess because I didn't understand it, but once, once you kind of get in the realm of things, it, it just kind of goes, and to the point, I don't even have just my two children at home now, I have two additional children that we are very close to their families, and we know their safety is like our safety, and they're learning at my house too, so now I have four children, all different levels of everything, at our home, that are getting their work done every single day, having great success with it, and, you know, it's nice because we're able, on our pages, we can see their grades daily, so we can kind of monitor exactly what's going on, I personally love that, because if I see something lacking in one child, I'm able to say, okay, like today we had one of the kids that was doing terrible in history, as of today, he has an EV7. So I was able to really work with him a little bit more, taking on a different hat now, but I was able to work with him a little bit more to get that grade up, and that's important, so, you know, I have four students at my house, and every one of them has kind of really worked into the whole program and done a great job.
Any other questions on school reopening?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, just, just to comment, I think working with that small percentage of the families is great, but also your willingness or transition, the ability to facilitate a transition back earlier than originally stated at a previous meeting, I think is great, and show support, and.
Yeah, I mean, again, we're inheriting, just so the district's aware, we've made a financial commitment to those, so we're obviously going to have to absorb that piece unless we can find, and then we've had a couple of instances where families have kind of unique circumstances that may come in late and maybe fill one of those slots, but again, at the end of the day, we, we feel we need to do what's best, these, these kids are our kids at the end of the day, and they remain in our district, and we need to provide those supports, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that, so thank you for that.
Yeah, oh, I did too, oh, thank you. I had, back to the class size update, I see that the, the junior year, is that consistent with what would have been the prior year, so you have 212 to 156?
No, so the 212 is now 207.
Oh.
And it just.
Got it, got it, got it.
We're hoping all of them move up.
All right, so on the homeschooling, do you have any idea of grade and trends?
We, I don't know if I could say trends, we do, we do identify them by grade, I don't have that information, Pat, would you have?
No, it pretty much ran the gamut, there wasn't any large cohort of anybody who was, who was leaving, or, you know, if it was just elementary or middle, it.
That was what I was looking for.
Yeah, the, the data's not showing that, it's all over the place.
Okay, that's fine, I was, I was just assuming it would have been elementary, so that's why I was asking. And then the final question is, I just wanted to follow up on, we talked about some additional Chromebooks for the elementary level, did we follow up on that?
Yeah, so, so the, so the update on that, I actually spoke to our vendor rep today from Connecticut after Mr. Mackamore provided me the update, so we're still in search of those last books, right, that, that initial piece that we made, we beat the, we beat the real crunch for those educators that are here, and we were able to secure that, and that's why we got our 6 to 12 up and running. We had originally shared with this group, and we've shared with the community, we were cautiously optimistic that our fourth and fifth grade Chromebooks and our staff Chromebooks updates would be October, we're now hearing early November.
Yeah, that's what I heard in the news, too.
Which is, yeah, so I actually literally called the gentleman today, and they're going to give us, they're giving us weekly updates in relation, it's, you know, it's a much larger piece beyond their, their piece, so I'm, we're cautiously optimistic we'll keep you updated.
Yeah, you do, that's, that's a big deal.
No, it's, well, it's the, the one, you know, it would be allowing those one-to-one devices, it also allows us, and we actually, I say we, like, I, I was there, but this Saturday we did a speed test with our Chrome, our student Chromebook versus the old Chromebook, our director of technology was doing that with Hub who came in, significant difference.
Big difference, yeah.
Big differences, too, so.
Surprise, yeah.
So clearly, when those devices get in the hands of our kids, those new devices in fourth and fifth grade, and then our new devices to our staff, it will also be an extend, extend down, I think, and you've asked this question before about having some positive impact on the K to 3, too.
That's exactly where I was going with it, I didn't know, we were so far behind, but I heard a report today that that's a major lie.
Yeah, so I, you know, I was trying to get a sense, is there anything I can do on my end to kind of push that through, it doesn't appear so, I mean, there, I even said, you know, send it to us in chunks, though, I wanted to be sure they understood, I, you know, I'll take 50 over 500.
Sure.
If that's the case, it's, it's not that reality, though, it's, they didn't feel that, we're talking January 1 at this point, though, I got to be honest with you, which I was, I was a little afraid I was going to hear, at this point, they did push it out to early November.
Yeah.
I know some institutions are negotiating discounts on future purchases, so let's keep that in the back of our mind, especially when we do have that potential.
Especially where we've made significant purchases.
Yeah, we have.
I think it's Sinkowitz had a. Zankowitz, Eda.
Yeah, just a quick clarifying, and Rick, for Rick or Kara, can you just give me a number, a budget number as far as the 123 students that are homeschooling? That number was higher than what I remember it. Just a budget ramifications of that, how much, what does that equal in chapter 70 funds?
We'd have to, I don't know that off the top, I can get that back, I can get back to you. It's significant, though, I mean, obviously. So that is, that number is significant, and that's why I put it there, 75, you know, additional than what has typically been averaged here. Again, Pat, I think that number is not 123, right? Probably close to 125 or 30?
Right.
Right now, based on a couple of most recent?
Yeah, I had more coming yesterday.
Yeah, it is, it is maybe the biggest concern above all the COVID issues in relation to funding. So Will, I will have to get back to you on the specific dollar amounts, but it obviously has a significant impact on assessment and future budget process. If in fact, if they're basing it, which they historically have, on your October 1 enrollment number.
Yeah, absolutely, and I totally understand the parents' right to keep their children home and obviously there's underlying health conditions there. But I just hope that, looking at both numbers, right, that I just hope that it wasn't a byproduct of parents losing kind of patience with us or faith in us to be able to educate their children. I don't think that's the case, but it just, that's just a huge number to me. And certainly going to have some budget ramifications moving forward, so. Water under the bridge at this point, but it's just worrisome.
So Will, I can, again, I only share it anecdotally, I know Pat gets the letters. I have had no interaction with families that have initiated this, that they expressed displeasure with their peace. It was more, much more of a personal perspective in relation to them feeling comfortable sending their kids to school.
Right, it was COVID-related. Most of them, even when they sent an email, indicated that they would be anxious to get back to us, but that right now, they just weren't comfortable doing it. And they never indicated it had any displeasure with our services.
And I want to just distinguish between, even though they grouped together on that page, TECA students, we do in fact receive, they are in fact our students and we would receive chapter 70 funds for those. So the homeschooling number is the number that could potentially have significant financial impact.
Yeah, absolutely, but I mean, just looking at the 330,000, too, right, it costs to send them to TECA, right?
Yep.
For one semester?
For one, yep.
I may add.
Yep, alrighty, thank you.
Couple of questions, the school choice number is 73, that's right in line or just sort of carries us to our exact line number in the assessment and sort of zeroes out our school choice account, is that correct?
Does.
Okay.
It's almost right on target with that.
Put the disadvantage of that, but we knew that going in.
Yeah. Well, and in fairness, we did not aggressively continue to pursue more students where in the past, because we didn't have that luxury because of safety and health issues.
Got it. I would, I know you'd mentioned about the staffing and allowing kids and we had a little bit more flexibility on numbers of the elementary school. I certainly hope with your expertise, it goes beyond just the numbers, it goes to how we educate those students. So looking at them, I'm sure there's a fine balance related to those, too, because I know there's challenges in our current system at the elementary level as far as the hybrid model and obviously adding more kids. While it won't impact the numbers gained, would impact the overall piece to that.
We're going to make every effort, and I've said this on multiple occasions, if it's safe, we're going to see as many students as we possibly can return to in-person instruction. And certainly it will have an impact. There's just some complexity relative to scheduling and cohorts at the high school and middle school, too, that complicated a little bit. I will say the three factors that need to be considered as we bring, look at full in-person potentially at some point, included having all our students come back, 2,700 or 2,800. The issues really are the safety issue, the space issue, as it pertains to the CDC guidance and six feet of space, that we wouldn't have the space to accommodate all of those, and then transportation. And I would put transportation to a lesser extent, because I think we've seen quite a few families already make commitments in relation to that. I'm not saying that we don't have an issue relative to buses, if all the students want, but I do see families in these communities willing to transport children and I do think that they would kind of in cohorts and pods work together if that were possible. I think the current restrictions, though, relative to transportation and space, that six feet limitation, will make it real challenging. We're hopeful that as we see success and continue to see success in our schools and community, though, we'll be able to expand it in the secondary level. So that's going to be revisited by the leadership team, Steve, at the middle, at all levels in relation to potentially seeing more students come in and not just be in their cohort, but be able to stay for both.
Typically, in the first two weeks of school, we have the getting used to the transportation, the times. Are we getting caught up, or we still have to figure out?
Yeah, so I think.
Is there a domino effect?
No, see, well, I think, I think the, I'm not so sure I'd call anything a benefit, this, Steve, right? The new norm, the fact that you have fewer students being transported on the bus and the adjustments that we made, the bus schedules, I think have really made a difference. Our morning routine, keep in mind, our middle school, high school students busing has gone extremely well. The students for just grays, very successful, middle school. We are running into getting some of our last elementary students on the bus in a timely fashion, at the end of the day, because we've staggered them and with, you know, you only have the 24 students. But overall, we've had a real successful start, but keep in mind, we're only transporting half of our students. And I think that helped, quite frankly, once we did the real hard work about who's going where and when.
Related to the campus programs, is that only those students in our cohort strategy so that would involve?
That's correct.
Or homeschool?
That is, that is correct at this point. But again, we'd have to take a look at that, you know, that's, those students remain our students. Vast majority of those families, I'm not so sure would want to commit there.
That's a different option, but, okay. And then one last thing is, I do want to, related to the school opening, and you brought it up about athletics, each of us did receive a letter. I just want to, one, commend the process that this student took in the letter and what they did. I think we've all received letters over the last six to nine months that some weren't as nice in that particular process, but I thought it was very well. But I also will commend the response, especially by the athletic director as far as the efforts that they're trying to do to make this as workable as possible. I know there's not going to be any easy answer, but I did want to commend both the start of that and getting the feedback in a very well-written letter, as well as the responses by yourself, Dr. Starkey, and in particular, Mr. Kabutio. So I thought that was very well received at that point. Any other questions on school reopening?
Good news is, through this whole conversation, we covered 7B and the new business, too, so enroll.
Mr. Madera, just, so this doesn't fall off of my plate anyways.
Sure.
We were going to do some painting and renewing of some floors at the elementary school.
Correct.
Did we get that done?
That was done, absolutely, yeah, that's why, you're specifically speaking to Eda Swamson?
How many classrooms did we get done, do you know? How many classrooms do we have left, maybe that's a better way to put it?
Both good questions that I need to get back to you on, so I don't give a misleading information. I want to say four to six, and both, almost the answers in both instances, four or six rooms that were tiled and are carpeted and are, that still need work, so. But that work was in fact done. I think with everything else that was typically a highlight, those things that were, but they were done. They did not get misplaced, specifically at Eda Swamson, those things were addressed this summer. I'll have to get back to you with the exact numbers.
And also, this carpet is very nice.
This carpet was done here, we had the flooring done at the intermediate school. I know some of you took some tours, we had cafeteria down there, we had the main office there. I can have Kara through Mr. Goodwin, maybe, at a future meeting, potentially. He might be a good presenter, because that's one individual among many who have really been putting in some endless hours and tireless work in relation to getting things ready, that it would be nice to highlight some of the things that were done.
Seeing no other questions, we'll move on to 7A, the train project status update.
Okay. In FY '20, the district performed a study related to heating and air conditioning equipment. At that time, it was discovered that boiler replacements, along with other energy savings initiatives, allowed the district to engage in a performance contract where we could utilize our energy savings to finance the improvements over an 18-year period. The funding of $5,946,403 was secured in late August. The second page of the report in your packet indicates that $5.9 million was received into a separately established account at Bank of America. Additionally, disbursements of $1.8 million were authorized prior to the beginning by the prior finance director, which included a 1% financing fee of $59,000, engineering costs, mobilization, and equipment down payments required to get the project started. Disbursement requests are provided directly by the district to the Bank of America through an escrow account upon request and submission of invoices by our vendor. On September 8, 2020, the high school boiler plant project started. The first stage includes demolition of the boiler plant. There were test samples taken to determine if there are any hazards related to asbestos. The only issue related to a boiler gasket, which is considered an insignificant finding. Boiler number one at the high school will be left in operational service to ensure that the heat will be turned on as planned for October 15. So far, at the high school, boiler number two and boiler number three has essentially been demolished. The project is a few weeks behind the original schedule due to a slight delay in the initial paperwork kicking off the contract. The other item that will change the timeline is that the steel required to build the boilers, the delivery, is currently behind schedule due to a three-week steel mill workers' strike in Canada. This might put us back another few weeks, but our director of facilities will be closely monitoring this and will try and get a location on the container of the steel. There are no other issues to report at this time related to the project. As a formality, I am requesting that the school committee consider two votes. One is surrounding the establishment of the separate capital project fund in our accounting software. We have named the fund Performance Energy Improvements. We will have to abbreviate this fund in our system to accommodate the number of allowable characters. The other vote that we are requesting is the official recognition of the separate establishment of the bank account at the Bank of America to be utilized only for these project management purposes.
Do these two votes require specific language?
I would say yes, please, if we could. The name of the fund we're asking for is Performance Energy Improve, without the E, if we could note that.
Kara, can I ask, is there a time perspective? Could this be provided at the next meeting?
It could be.
Yeah, why don't we provide that? If you can give us the exact language it needs to be in, so that way, we don't, I don't screw that up.
No problem.
Appreciate it, so do the two votes the next meeting.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you for the update to that. Does this obviously roll, that's the impact to the schedule at the high school, does this also impact the boilers at the other two schools as well?
So it's possible that the other boilers could start to be worked on. There were potentially some other delays in the project, meaning that the lighting could be done. But there were other pieces that, one, it has to do with the building control components and those would have to be done when school is finished for the year. So I know that the facilities director is working on sort of reshifting the task to keep the vendor busy. So it's possible they could start working on some of the other boiler work while the steel is coming in.
That was a colorful conversation I had with the director of facilities. I'll add that, since I'm the more veteran person, that Kara was polite and professional in relation, some of these delays and potential things, which happen when projects make some adjustments. And I know Mr. Goodwin is working closely with Kara and myself and the vendor to see if we can make some adjustments so some other work can be done as a result of maybe some pushback on things that we thought might get done a little bit sooner.
The good news is, we're still guaranteed the savings, even though the equipment may not be in there, so.
Yeah, it's not a financial impact.
As long as we incorporate the safety from the student's perspective and we check that box, and it sounds like we have with the boiler number one, whatever delay they want.
Well, and I would also add that supply chain interruptions, we always anticipate. I not anticipate a strike in Canada, but I know steel, even for my project, is an issue.
Sure.
Any other questions on the train project? Mr. Clark?
New controls, what are the new controls going to control?
So it has to do with the building controls, and this is a little outside of my area of expertise here. I'd have to really go back to the director of facilities to get more information.
And I'd be certainly not suggesting it's in my wheelhouse, Bob, but the controls do impact the HVAC system, right? It's the heating and air ventilation system, so they're upgrades to automate them, to make them more efficient.
Is our people going to train in those controls?
Yeah, so part of this project, not only, the great part of this piece is, not only will they install these things, but they'll maintain them. So we'll have the train expertise throughout the time process of the 20 years to take care of that, correct?
Because going back several years, trains always been our company, I think. We had controls, but nobody was, nobody was how to operate them, so.
So they will, obviously they'll work with the people on site, but they will certainly be, part of this whole project in agreement was that they would work with us to maintain them.
That's the basis of performance contracting, is they would own the upkeep of that and they're incentivized to make sure it's maintained properly so they can guarantee these savings over that period of the project. Maybe good to have Mr. Goodwin come in. Quite frankly, I think it's worthwhile for him to come in and take a bow or nothing else the way the schools, I know not everyone was able to see how they looked in the tours, but a lot of effort went into that, and a lot of the projects. I know we haven't hit them all as far as what was done, but maybe a good way to have him outline that. Any other questions? We did 7B, moving on to item eight, reports to the committee. Ms. Lee, Director of Finance?
Yes, so in your packet, there is a COVID summary. It actually includes a summary of both fiscal years in FY '20, which is the top half of the document. So I'll go over FY '20 first. So these are the expenditures that really were incurred between March 1 through June 30, 2020, which is an eligible period to capture COVID-related expenses that may be qualified for funding under various federal sources. For FY '20, approximately $581,000 was expended, where $100,000 was spent for personal protective equipment and $481,000 was spent or committed towards technology-related costs, primarily Chromebooks. Just today, as I noted earlier, I had compiled a request that will be submitted to the town of Lakeville for $285,000 as it relates to their portion of Chromebooks and PPE for FY '20. The superintendent and I met with Freetown yesterday and it was communicated to us that Freetown had approved, they believe they had approved the first initial round of Chromebooks for FY '20, which may result in another recapture of $75,000 of available funds. I'm currently working with Freetown to determine if they also approve the second round of the one-to-one grade six through 12 devices. We're working to see if they were also voted to include their support. If they were voted, we could be looking at another $125,000 of support. We will be recircling back with the town on this request. The spreadsheet included in the packet did not include the Chromebook assistance from the town of Freetown. At the time, we didn't have a true commitment from them. I'm also looking at the possibility of FEMA funding. The original legislature allowed for PPE costs without a shutdown. However, the regulations were just recently revised. The FEMA funding no longer would allow for PPE and cleaning costs unless it is due to a closure or a COVID event. I will be establishing a FEMA profile for the district. We believe it would be the first time the district has identified an account with FEMA. The downside to FEMA is it can take a considerable amount of time to have the claims processed. But if everything falls into place, we may be able to recoup about $500,000 from FY '20. So that's the FY '20 piece. Before I go on to FY '21, I'd like to ask if there are any specific questions on FY '20? Yes?
I'm not sure if it's a question, Kara, but in the future, would you be able to break this down town by town for us so that we can see which ones have been approved, which ones are still waiting?
Absolutely, yep. And so right now, there's so much up in the air that, you know, this is all estimated at this point. But as soon as I have some true commitments and billings that are approved, then I'd be happy to identify those.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Bussing, does bussing come out? Busing, does busing come out of the CARES Act of money?
So I would refer, I'm going to refer to that in FY '21 when we get to that piece. So there is a possibility that we may be able to get some of it covered, but it really depends upon what is available for the additional funds from the town of Lakeville.
So we haven't put in for that yet?
Right, so I was closing up FY '21 first, but I plan on having a discussion with the town on that, probably starting next week, some of those specifics.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, so for FY '21, you will see that a summary of estimated sources of funds and expenditures. For FY '21, I am projecting resources of approximately $1.2 million, which includes the assumption that we can recoup about $500,000 of eligible expenditures for FY '20. It's important to note on the potential COVID resources that the ESAR funds are the most flexible. They can be spent for a much longer period of time than the CARES Act funding. The CARES Act funding is allowable only until December 30th, not December 31. Funny enough, the legislature calls for December 30th for the spending period. The estimated costs on the spreadsheet are really the worst-case scenario. The projected costs in FY '21 are estimated at worst-case scenario to be about $1.7 million, where $825,000 of that could be projected to occur after December 30th, the period covered under the CARES Act funding. It is possible that legislature could extend the allowable period of the CARES Act, but to date, this has not occurred. For the items projected to occur after December 30th, if the TECA enrollment stays steady to the fall, the unfunded cost could be $375,000. And of course, we're not sure, we have projected in the spreadsheet that the TECA would occur in the spring, same as fall. And of course, we're hoping to bring our students back here on campus. During 2021, to accommodate social distancing, we have had to add two additional buses with cleaning costs. It is projected this will cost the district $225,000, where $135,000 would relate to the period after December 30th. The district is in the process of attempting to negotiate with our vendor from the original 180-day service period to 170-day school year. So we're hoping for little savings there. And of course, we'd be looking at potentially utilizing the CARES Act if the town of Lakeville is able to support this for the portion that's through December 30th for the buses. And also for the PPE, the district will attempt to purchase as much PPE as possible to capture as much CARES Act funding as we can before December 30th if the funding is still available to support it from the towns. So it would take some collaborative effort there. One thing to note on this schedule is I will be modifying the estimates as time progresses as our commitments of resources and expenditures become more clear. As noted before, Lakeville has extended their support to us beyond the $225 per student under the CARES Act. However, based on our discussions with Freetown, they appear not to have the available resources under the CARES Act to provide the same offering. But we'll still have continued conversations with the town just to ensure that they're in the same position. One thing to additionally note to the schedule is I will be adding an estimate for the custodial overtime that I mentioned earlier. If Freetown can contribute the additional Chromebook funds for FY '20, we would be looking at a deficit of about $300,000 if the estimates are not further revised. But that deficit includes the fact that, you know, we're projecting to utilize TECA same as, you know, for the spring, same as fall. So that estimate could be revised. If Freetown cannot contribute to the Chromebooks for FY '20, we would be looking at a $500,000 deficit. If the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District does not have to run TECA in the spring, I'm projecting that we could be at a break even, even with the COVID transactions for FY '21. So as you can see, there's a lot of estimates here. And as we go forward, hopefully the picture will become clearer.
What assumptions are we making? First of all, I think that breaking down the numbers, I appreciate that, thank you. Are we, the assumptions assuming that we're in a hybrid model for the entire year?
That's correct, currently.
And then TECA would be full year based upon the assumptions there?
That's correct.
So I do think that we need to plan for a worst-case scenario from an expense situation. You know, for example, PPE, what does that change if we're back full-time? Right? I'm sure there's going to be added expenses to that. And there's a lot of assumptions and hope that we're going to get this funding. But I do think that we need to plan for how do we mitigate this $500,000 deficit? So I appreciate the breakdown of this and I understand there's a lot of moving parts, but I think we also need to start the discussion of how do we mitigate the deficit, right? And my first pass is what can we do operationally, right? And I do know that transportation is a big item and we moved all of our excess transportation into E and D. So I guess at some point, we need to talk about the creativity about how do we offset that and plan for a $500,000 deficit. If it's less than that, great. So that would be the challenge there.
The other piece, if I could just add, I've reached out to Desi because there was a potential that the schools may have some PPE donations coming from MEMA. So I'm looking, I'm trying to also see if there's any donations we can receive as a district. And we're really trying to keep our antennas out there for things that we could obtain for free.
In years past, a new bus was 90K. It is, so if I do the quick math, we've got about 45K in cleaning of the buses?
So there would be about $16,000 of cleaning. It came to about $207,000, I believe, for the two buses.
And I'm assuming if we go back to a full model without the restrictions, we're not tied to those two buses, is that correct?
Yeah, we have all the flexibility relative to transportation and busing, that's correct. I mean, it's so early in the process and I understand completely that, you know, we're looking at both gambits from full remote to full in-person, right? And keeping open all those options, I think she's laid out kind of what it would be right now, it's displayed out through. And we'll have to continue to monitor.
Yeah, okay.
That was actually, so that was not a third party, just so that, the cleaning piece, just for specifics. We negotiated that with first student. It involves them doing the cleaning and their own employees. They actually were going to initially bring in a third party. It was going to be double the cost as it relates to that. So they are taking, they are addressing that twice a day under the current cohort, both after the morning and the evening runs. I would think under any circumstance, we're going to continue to do that, right? Regardless of what model we're in, unless obviously the buses are not rolling. Hopefully, we're not having that conversation.
I think this is great. I think that, you know, even to consolidate this for future is that the chart, the numbers, what assumptions are we basing it on? And then, you know, keep it abreast as far as which ones are still floating in the air, such as the funding sources, because that's a giant swag that we have that we potentially have to make up.
Absolutely.
From a deficit perspective.
Will do.
Any questions on Ms. Lee's report? Seeing none, we'll move on to Dr. Gublinski.
So for my report this evening, I've shared with you the grants that were written this summer. I began with the Title I, II and IV grants. Those grants are being finalized now. Our Title I allotment this year was $320,851. And those funds support reading specialist positions at two of our schools, our Title I curriculum family nights, a summer jumpstart program, which is a support for students who we fear some regression during the summer. Tutoring, data analysis meetings for progress monitoring for students with, we're just monitoring their academic performance. Our Title II allotment was $63,744. Title II funds support our mentor coordinator and mentor stipends, curriculum leaders meetings, professional development, teacher book studies, PD materials and supplies. Our Title IV allotment for this year was $22,455. Title IV provides an academic enrichment for like a well-rounded education. Those funds supported instructional technology, some instructional materials and author visit for family nights at the elementary schools. And then I just gave you a breakdown of title grant allocations for the last three years for each Title I, Title II and Title IV. And then the ESAR grant, we were allotted $253,607. Our private school allocation was $39,474,000, leaving us with $214,133. And the ESAR grant funding is supporting professional development, our Highlander Institute, textbooks and software, PPE and supplies and instructional materials. The COVID CARES grant, we were allotted $270,675,000. Those expenditures have to be encumbered by December 30th. And that grant is funding some of the TECA remote learning licenses, our IRadi instructional licenses and supplies that are related to health and safety.
Any questions for Dr. Gublinski?
Ms. Owen, I may simply add, the internal joke, this is unscripted, she doesn't know. I'm going to say this in central offices. If you didn't know who the Director of Curriculum Instruction was prior to COVID, you do now. Everybody knows Pat Gublinski's name, whether it be because of homeschooling, because if you think of the umbrellas by which the Assistant Superintendent, that position, Director position, kind of fell. And then the remote learning piece, which she somewhat inherited in the sense of it being under curriculum instruction, has really brought, in some ways, a real positive, as much as it's been a struggle and challenge, but she's been able to interact with families and students and the schools in relation in ways that, and certainly the PD piece where we've really, whether it be EdTech, as I referenced last time, or Highlander, working closely with our staff. And I think some of you are parents here. I'd like to think you're seeing some of the benefits of that leadership relative to the synchronized learning and asynchronous learning and what's being delivered to our middle school and high school kids and ultimately what's going to be delivered even more so to the elementary. I think we really, you know, a lot of that office, a lot of those activities and those PD spearheaded from her office and through the principals. So I just wanted to make that recognition. Pat, you would agree, right? Your name's been a little bit more common?
I was enjoying the anonymity for a while, but I have to say, people have been wonderful. It has been nice to reach out to the community and have gotten some good feedback after, you know, things have gotten settled for people. They have been gracious enough to come back at me, either via email or phone call to just say, "It's working, it's great, thank you, we're all set." Okay, so very nice. For the most part, I don't get yelled at as much anymore. There's a lot less of that and actually really wasn't a whole lot of that anyway. People were just very happy to have a voice at the other end of the phone who was going to try to do something for them.
I think it also goes to show that you are, the school department is working with us parents that are in TECA, which I think everyone really appreciates, is that everyone's coming together. And the fact that I personally did get a phone call from you and I know other parents that did. And everyone really appreciated that, so that's a nice putting it together.
So it was worth giving up my anonymity then? If that's the prevailing sentiment out there, then that's great. I'm glad. I'm glad.
Great to hear. Ms. Carolyn?
Yes.
Liz does not have any opportunity to have that. Folks know Director of Student Service and Special Education immediately, so you didn't have that luxury from the get-go, but Liz, sorry.
Very good, no worries. So we also finalized our grants this week, the past two weeks as well. We have the Grant 240, which is the IDEA funds that go to support several special education teachers, an adjustment counselor, speech and language pathologist, an elementary administrator, multiple paraprofessionals, contracted services, and we have specialized supplies, equipment and technology. So the entitlement grant funding for this year is $754,272. I gave you a little history to see how that stacks up year to year with inflation and increasing costs. We also finalized the $262,000 Early Childhood Funds. That is a smaller amount of $18,768 and we use it to offset a paraprofessional for the early childhood program. The two, we had two again this year unfunded discretionary grants. $298,000 was early childhood programs for supplies and other program materials and equipment. That's not been funded since fiscal year 18. And I think the one that really hurts is the Grant 274, Special Education Program Improvement. Also hasn't been funded since fiscal year 18. And that was last funded at almost $23,000, so. With that said, I've also updated the CPAC meeting is October 6th at 6:30. Probably virtual, more information to come on that. And I went back to our audit district enrollment chart, which you can see. I've left in a couple of years to get the sense and completed it with our summer and early fall activities.
The other piece of new hat that I can say Liz has worn this year is the PPE hat, right? As a result of the needs of those sub-separate programs, she's also inherited kind of making, establishing that piece, obviously all our students. But in relation to the needs specific to a lot of addressing, that was something, in addition to all the PD and everything, her office inherited in relation to making sure our staff were prepared and ready for our kids when they came in. Because keep in mind, our high-needs students, not just special education students, are in both cohorts and with us. In addition to collaborative students, we have multiple collaborative programs in our district and those kids are attending school.
Did deliver some PPE as well, so yes.
Thank you for that. A couple of questions. The services, you talk about the unfunded discretionary grants. The services that we utilize those grants for, are we still doing those and we're just covering them through the operational budget?
Well, so the early childhood program is just, again, it's like $1,400. We did use that for supplies for the early childhood, the two intensive and then the two integrated classrooms. So if we need supplies, we do take that from either the IDEA grant or if we have, you know, available money in one of our other lines. It's a smaller amount, but.
But those two items, we're still doing the services that we associated with them, but they're just being covered either by another grant or operational piece?
I would say so, although 274 is always a bit of an extra. That's almost $23,000. When I last funded this, I had my whole district's paraprofessional group, probably about 25, take the RBT course, the Registered Behavior Technician course, which was an extra, something that we probably wouldn't have had the money to do, but again, that's been a number of years. So that's a loss.
We're going to have these grants and it's just more, we do the services, I want to make sure we're maintaining them, but we just now have to take a bit, do that operationally versus a grant.
Yeah, or the Special Ed Program Improvement, that's sort of an extra discretionary to sort of, you know, breathe some life in, but it wouldn't be carried as an additional cost in later years.
And then the question on the audit district numbers, I think that's a great trend. Is, what's my question? Our budgetary perspective, was the Plan 35? Or was this the result of changes over the summer that we lost some of those students or we brought them more in-house?
So we are constantly planning every month for these numbers. So we kind of get the sense of who may be, you know, graduating and leaving us, who we are able to retrieve and pull back. And sometimes there's movement among these categories. So we are planning for that every month, so that number does fall within our. So that does, number does fall within our general budget. We did have three graduate.
When we put together this year's budget, we were planning about a 35 auto district number?
Yes.
We were.
Okay.
Yeah.
The reason for my question. How much savings we had is what you were.
Well, we were just talking about a 500K deficit, right? And we're already talking about some students coming out of TECA needing more services. So I was just seeing where our budgetary number, I didn't think we were that low when we put together the budget for FY21, but, you know, we can take a look at that. But I think that's great work as far as either bringing them in-house is for that, as long as we're.
And the other piece, and I don't want to take Liz's expertise, but keep in mind, sometimes when you bring a student into your district, you may not be having a savings in relation to that because you may need to provide some staffing and or other needs that would that would come with that student.
Yeah, that's always going to be a moving, hopefully we're not adding nine more based upon the numbers. Any questions for Ms. Curlin?
Item nine, Subcommittee Updates.
Nothing.
I have one request. I'm looking for two representatives to join me on the Freetown Vocational Schools Subcommittee as we look to explore the potential of our students, our current eighth-grade students either entering Old Colony and maintaining that as a membership and or Bristol Plymouth. This is a request from the town of Freetown Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator. I met with Kara yesterday at the picket table at the town meeting, at at Town Hall, I should say, at Freetown. And and I told them.
When are those meetings, though?
So I assumed the two people that have been instrumental up to this point, I know Mr. Clark and others have have shared, but I do, Jen would be supportive, but I do know both Will and Jean have been involved. You were part of the visit, so I was just looking to see if I could identify two representatives for that Subcommittee from Freetown.
No, again, I would like to stay involved. It's just a question of when the meetings are. That's the thing.
I I'm not so sure it's going to be a significant lift there. I think, in fact, the concern town of Freetown had was making sure we had, we met the timelines relative to the application process and things like that. So I think they wanted at least have something established and David or Ms. Pacico would just email us and communicate with us that way.
That's perfect, and I volunteered to be on that when we did the visit, so.
I do as well, yep.
Good, thank you.
I I guess my only request maybe as part of the Subcommittee is that hopefully Freetown is doing this, is communication out to the community that they're at least starting this conversation? Because I know there's a lot of angst in the prior year, so I think this is actually be good news. The end result may not be what they're looking for, but at least this conversation that's happened.
There will absolutely be this year, and it's the intent of the Subcommittee in the town of Freetown, that there is a vocational option for our Freetown students. Because obviously, we found out after the fact that that was not the case with our current ninth grade. And that's the intent actually about bringing this up as soon as we can. So before the application process starts for these students and families, they know where they stand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And yes, the communication's important.
Any other business may promptly come before the meeting.
Want a motion to adjourn?
Seeing none, we'll move to the next item, which is upcoming dates. As Ms. Curlin mentioned, CPAC meeting is October 6th at 6:30. And then our next school committee meeting is October 14th. Here, we're back in the library to that at 6:30. It is 7:55, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous.